There we go, no green, they were green when I did their plan condition.
Okay.
I don't know what that means, but.
Right, turn right.
You're alive?
That must be what the green light means. That's good to know.
You ready? You guys ready?
Yep, we're good.
Hey, you guys ready?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna call or order the October sixth Commissioners Meeting. Before we start, we're gonna ask Brandon Ritchie to come up and lead us in prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this day. We thank you for the day you've given us, for the time you've given us. We pray that we can be good stewards of that time, Father God, and the resources that you provided us with. Father, this day, we, as we gather here, we pray for our leaders, we pray for our elected officials, Father. We lift them up to you. We pray their decisions are ones that are guided by wisdom. And, and as they lead, Father God, we pray that their steps are guided by your hand. We thank you for their commitment to lead and to, to give of their time for this service, Father. And we pray for the, the health of the Plan Director, Father, that, we pray for healing for, for him. We pray for continued recovery. We pray for those who are, who are around him, Father God. We pray for his family, for peace and calm at this time, Father. We thank you for the opportunity we have each time we come before you to petition you on behalf of anything. This day, we just thank you for your glorious hand, which guides our steps and is a light upon our path. In your name we pray. Amen.
All, uh, join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You seated? Thank you all. Thank you, Brandon, for coming again, giving your time to lead some prayer. Before we get started, I do have a request. Uh, Jody has another, uh, appointment, so if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to make a motion, I'd have a motion to adjust the agenda, to allow her to speak before Jason.
So move.
Second. Motion made second to allow Jody to come up and speak, uh, this, uh, excuse me, in this spot. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Jody, come on up. Not sure technically we have to do this because she is an employee, but we're just gonna make sure we take things clean and legal.
Morning. Do I have to put my name on this? No.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
No, that, that's fine, because.
They know who you are.
That's for public, that's for anybody for public input.
Your reputation precedes you.
Oh, oh.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Well, because of the shutdown, I can't work out of the federal office, and so I went to the extension office to see if they had space for me. And Brianna had mentioned that they could possibly help me out, so they have a desk, a desktop for me to use there, so I would like permission to work out of that office for the time being.
Is it just till the shutdown's over?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'm for it. Yeah, that's good to know. I, I thought maybe they had made a permanent cut and you.
No, no, nothing like that so far. And there hasn't even been any chatter about that. Right now, the soil and water offices are, are staying with, uh, NRCS offices in the federal buildings if they are already located there.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping they don't move us out because I really like that office.
So do I have a motion?
I move that we approve, uh, letting, uh, Jody use space here in the county building until, uh, her regular building reopens.
Second, that. Motion made second to allow Jody to go ahead and use space in the county building or be in the, uh, extension office. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There you go, thank you. We'll get back on agenda now. Anyone here have any comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Jason? You're up. How we department?
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, start out with permits.
Uh, first one is Comcast. Twenty-seven, five-seven, Seventh Road, provide a new service in West Township, it's a. A motion?
Motion to approve the, uh, request from Comcast.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the request from Comcast. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is BSM Group, uh, basically Underground Can Do It, Con Do It, Cardinal Circle, King, uh, Ariel, I think that's right, Center Township. Uh, it's, uh, two-inch duct and fiber cable. The second one is Eleventh Cardinal Circle to US thirty-one. Same thing, Center Township aboard. Uh, next one is Eleventh Forest Drive to US thirty-one, Center Township aboard, same thing. And the next one is Eleventh Hunter Drive, Manor Drive, the Best Street to Regency, Center Township aboard. Uh, next one is, uh, Third to Pine to Nutmeg, excuse me, Third from Pine to Nutmeg, Pope Township, another bore. Uh, the next one is Pine Road, Third to US six, Pope Township aboard. Uh, the last one, number seven, is Michigan, Eleventh to Lupine, Center Township aboard. These are basically all the same thing, uh, duct and fiber cable.
We approve all seven requests as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve all seven requests. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Bright Speed has one request here, uh, Plymouth Goson Trail, North Iris to Hawthorne, German Township is a bore. Basically, it looks like about the same thing.
There's, there's two requests for.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's more here. Plymouth Goson Trail, North Iris to Hawthorne, German Township is aerial. Uh, work on existing poles. North Plymouth Goson to Grape, German Township, another aerial. Uh, Plymouth Goson Trail, Hawthorne to Fourth, uh, German Township, another aerial. The fifth one is four B, North Iris to West Shore Drive to East Shore Drive, German Township aerial. Uh, number six is four B, West Shore Drive to North Iris Drive, German Township aerial. Number seven is seventy-four, seventy-three, five C Road, German Township aerial. Again, some work on existing poles. And number eight is Plymouth Goson Trail, uh, eighty-one, forty-five Plymouth Goson Trail, place fiber to existing poles, a fiber upgrade. Again, that's German Township aerial. A motion approved?
Uh, hold up here, I'm just. This is all dealing with Bright Speed, and I'm still trying to work out that issue with them. I'd recommend at this time that we do not approve these. That's my thoughts on it.
Yeah.
Well, um, I mean, we, I've seen this done once.
Yeah.
And it got their attention.
How long have these, uh, when did these get filed with yours?
Coming in usually anywhere from after today's meeting until the next meeting. Um, usually the Thursday before is about the cutoff time that by the time we get them up to trade review and get them back for the Commissioners Meeting, so usually that Thursday before Commissioners Meeting.
Um, yeah, I mean, ultimately, uh, the state statutes allow these type of utilities access to a right of way, but, I mean, there's latitude and creating permitting structures and, and things like that, so, I mean, if you want to give it a try and see if that gives you a little leverage to, to get somebody on the phone, I mean, that's, I think, within your prerogative.
Are you, are you hoping to get somebody here at the table, or what are we trying to accomplish?
Some information back from them.
Yeah.
Um, now, granted also to them, the majority of these are aerial. So if we delay it, we still don't have to worry about cold weather, stuff like that. It's not gonna prohibit them from doing anything, I wouldn't think. So.
Jason, do you have a contact point with Bright Speed?
I can. If you have to this.
Would you be comfortable with approving these and then using Jason's contract try one more time, and if they don't do it? Or do you want to make your, is this where you want to make your stand?
You already put in a significant amount of effort on this.
Yes, I agree with that.
I'd be will, I'd be willing to go ahead and approve them. And then if you, give me their contact number, who you work with.
If they don't want to address your issues, then we'll, we'll just, I think you have the right to tell them, we're, we're going to take other actions.
All right.
You're comfortable with that?
Fine with that, yep.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, a request from Bright Speed as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the request from Bright Speed as, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, Tsunami ProServe LLC, uh, East Shore to State Road, East Shore, Eighteenth to State Road ten, Union Township, it's a bore. Uh, it's boring for a, a media com. And then it's also North Lake Drive, four B to Spruce. Looks like it's the same thing. Do I have a motion?
And I move that we approve the two.
Hold just a second, Jason. You might have had two there, but this is East Shore, eighteen B to State Road one seventeen, and South Shore Sycamore to Venetian Village. Did you want these to go today? It's fine.
You can, but I do not have these on there.
Okay, you can hold those then, and we'll just do these two.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I have two requests for Tsunami.
I remove, I move that we approve the request, uh, by Tsunami for, uh, East Shore, Eighteenth to State Road ten, and North Lake Drive, four B to Spruce.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the Tsunami requests. The two requests, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Go ahead, Jason.
Bridge one, Yule Trail, uh, the update, the gas line has been relocated and destruction is to start. We'll be having a meeting with, uh, La Porte Construction just to go everything, go over everything due to the fact that this has been delayed. Then try to come up with a game plan over the winter on what we want to do to proceed for the winter. Um, I assume you guys would probably want to try to have that road opened. And if we had to do anything, come back in the spring opposed to closing it down, then make everybody turn around all winter long in order to.
Right.
So if we have to do limestone or something like that, maybe there's something we can do to maybe help offset that cost a little bit because it is a local project.
Yep.
Um, just kind of work together with them to see if we can come up with a game plan for winter side of it.
And Sean, did we say we, we were gonna take a, an estimate of what, uh, increased costs as we incurred, uh, based on NIPSCO's delay and ask them for some reimbursement on that, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll follow you on that, kind of what we come up with, that way you have a little better understanding or idea. Um.
Do we have anything that would at all indicate that if we are not out there working and we have left a temporary fix there to indicate to the public that the, the fix is temporary and that we didn't just stop that sure, yeah?
Because, uh, literally that will be a paved bridge when it's all said and done, but we most likely we're gonna have to go over the winter with limestone. I mean, we're looking at within forty-five days, most asphalt plans will be closed anyway. And that'll be at least probably into December before we even get to that stage. I think offsetting when it was supposed to be done and when it will be done, I, I do think there's some pay delays there that we should be incurring for. Um, Bridge two, thirty-two Randolph Street, um, there's a change order that needs all three signatures. That's basically switching from the striping products to performance to paint. So literally, that's all it is, is how it's worded. It's just going from performance to paint, but due to the fact that it's a contract and it has a change order name to it, they just have to actually do that. Uh, there's no cost on the change order. It's just basically wording.
And can we go ahead?
Angie hat, or Angie and Tori have that.
You probably need a motion to approve that change order before we sign it?
I move to approve the change order as presented. Second.
Is this CO dash zero zero three, correct?
Yes.
Uh, motion made second to approve the change order at no cost, just with the Commissioner's signatures for, uh, CO dash zero zero three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, Bridge two thirty-one Center Street, uh, Lori is here, so I'm gonna give her the floor to speak on this. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask her.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just have a little memo here.
Let's, we, so, please state your name.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah. Thank you. Angie, I'll give you this one once I'm done.
Thank you.
Do better than that, I'll give you mine. You're all still heard.
Good morning, Lori Johnson with DLZ two-two-one-one, East Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, um, I'm here this morning to explain, um, what is the status of the Bridge two thirty-one Center Street in Bremen. Um, over the last couple of weeks, uh, NDOT indicated that Chipo and FHWA met to consider the reclassification from non-select to select. Helen Alexander with NDOT indicated they're gonna switch the classification to select, which means it will likely become a rehab instead of a replacement. So, um, we don't have the official memo yet. We're awaiting that from NDOT to kind of give us the details and the reasoning. Um, I can go back and explain if you want that explanation of why it was, why, why it was considered select and now or non-select and select if you want, but, um, maybe you already, maybe Jason's already done that. Um, given that information, we had a T-TAC meeting at MACOG last week. They asked us to prepare a memo because it's gonna extend the timeline to get this project to, to bidding. So our right-of-way funds were coming up in this next, in this fiscal year, and they've asked us to push that out, so we're gonna prepare a memo with the reasoning why we need to push out our right-of-way funds until the next fiscal year. Um, because we have to change the design that we've, that we've started. We're not completely through the design, but we have to go back and make some adjustments. Um, we will also prepare a letter for the county to, to, um, actually more of a memo. Once we get the memo from NDOT, we can look at their requirements and then prepare a memo for you and presentation to NDOT and MACOG on kind of our next steps forward, but until we get the official memo from NDOT, we can't, um, finalize all those next steps. Um, we hope that we will get it soon and we'll have this memo prepared for you by the end of the month. Um, right now, the project has a letting date of August of twenty twenty-seven, but we do expect that to be revised and pushed out further because of this change in the classification.
Basically, it makes it cheaper, correct?
Unfortunately, probably not.
Really?
No.
Okay.
And my question was gonna be, based on your experience, um, how does a change like this affect overall cost for the county?
Well, we did a, uh, we did a cost analysis originally to, uh, rehab versus replacement. And the benefit cost analysis definitely favored replacement. So we'll go back, um, there might be some investigations that we need to make, especially, um, in regard to the areas surrounding the bridge because of the type of construction that's gonna happen. Um, you've got a, a property that's very close, actually like the basement wall shares a wing wall with that bridge, so that's kind of gonna be tricky that we need to look at a little bit closer. Um, but, you know, just extending it out, the cost of construction increases, so inflation costs. Um, there's gonna be some redesign that is going to have to happen. Um, that's what this memo should line out, is kind of what the cost and implications, the schedule implications are, so.
This, this is a federal project, right?
Correct.
So how does that affect our, our match on that project? Are, are we gonna have to cover all of these overages, or the, the Fed's gonna still pick up their ratio?
That's part of the memo that we're going to put together to see if there is additional costs that this, the federal, you know, the state through the federal government would support that eighty-twenty still, so.
It'll be interesting to see what NDOT's rationale for this was. I thought the letter that was put together with all the historical research was convincing to me, but apparently they didn't, they didn't like it.
We're very disappointed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, the rationale, we don't understand because from an engineering standpoint, the fact that it, their contention that it's a concrete arch doesn't make sense. It's really a stone arch based on, we did the borings and it showed the large-sized cobble, so um, we're waiting, awaiting that memo to see what they say and how do they justify their, their, um, decision to move it from non-select to select, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well done.
Jason, what else you got?
Oh, so that's over. Um, Bridge eighty-eight, Twelfth Road, we had quarterly reports on, one oh eight quarterly reports were done on, um, for the bridge inspections, uh, phase two will start this month. Uh, EV Grant, Martel's still trying to obtain the certification and hope to have it this week, so that can be closed out. Uh, the MOU for the Academy, uh, that invoice has been submitted and paid. Uh, pavement strippings, the RFPs were received. United Consulting was the highest ranking firm. Information was submitted to NDOT approved to proceed. Uh, final tracing plans for the submital need signature, um, on that page. Angie has that also for signatures on that one. Uh, Violetics, we met with them on October third.
We need a motion. Are you talking to Finley?
No, the road.
Oh, sorry.
Pavement striping. We get a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion for that.
Motion for that.
Real quick.
Tracing.
So on the, on the pavement striping, when, um, when the Commissioners do the, the rating of the folks that have submitted their RFPs, how are those calculated? Because the three of us submit a rating, and then are there any other factors that are taken into consideration on that?
These are the rating sheets that each of us score. So once those are scored, then they're tallied up for a grand total scoring.
Okay.
And those are what's submitted based upon what the final scores are.
Okay, so it's just our three ratings in there?
Um, and mine.
Okay.
So usually like, uh, some kind of a factor to level out everybody's scores, so that if you, you were grading it and thought, oh, gave everybody slightly higher scores and somebody else gave slightly lower, they, there's some kind of formula to.
And that's part of the scoring sheets that you actually give for the selection. Um, the scores on those were, RQAW was three hundred and ninety-three total, United Consulting was three hundred and ninety-seven total, and Abercambia was three hundred and twenty-five total. So, I mean, they all were well within that margin of, uh, rankings.
Right, so what do you need? You need a, a, uh, approval of, to prove this final tracing plans? Is that what we need?
The final tracing is the information that's submitted for the striping itself, and that doesn't pertain to these. Uh, that's just a signature page that United put together for the final tracing to submit to NDOT for approval.
So that's what you need approval of?
Yes. And that's basically just three signatures on it, and I think Angie's on it as well for.
So, hope I got this right. Do I have a motion to approve the final tracing plans for United Consulting?
So moved. Second.
Motion made second to approve the final tracing plans for United Consulting. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, then Violetics, we had a meeting with them on October third, went over the information. Um, basically got the startup and the setup, hoping to start running that this week. Uh, road program wise, we had a screen rental, uh, the week of September eighteenth. Uh, I had sent a notice out for the approval to sign for a screen rental and wanted to ratify that approval to sign for that today.
That was because basically your machine you had went down.
Correct.
You were in the middle of projects and couldn't waste the time, so, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion made second to approve the rental, uh, the screen rental agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, nine B, three thirty-one to County Line has been completed. Fourth Road King to West Shore has been completed. Four B, Tamarack to Sycamore completed, and that was just a wedge. So if you get any calls on that, we literally just wedged that route. We had almost eight to ten inches of crown off of the road. So literally just wanted to try to wedge that in, and we'll come back and complete that in twenty twenty-six, whether that's adding another surface to it or chip seal it, but just so if you get any questions on that, that's what was done. Likewise, the same on Tamarack. Um, we'll continue to work and complete, uh, the paving projects in the subdivisions. Uh, twenty twenty-five community crossing projects have been completed. Uh, twenty twenty-six community crossing projects, um, have a financial commitment letter for that. There is projects listed on that. Um, the total on that was one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen. Um, our match on that would be three hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven, sixty-seven. So we are slightly over on the match. But just like always, we don't want to be short. We would just soon be over, and if we can offset those costs internally, that's great. And if they do come in under, at least we're in that ballpark.
You have the project for twenty twenty-six, you're gonna be submitting?
I do. They're on there.
And you? Are they on here? Are they on here?
Uh, no, they're on the financial commitment letter.
Okay, can you read them projects for us?
The projects that are on there are fourteen B, State Road seventeen to County Line, uh, twelve B, Town Limits to US thirty, Mukshaw, State Road ten to eighteen B, and Fifteenth Road, uh, west of the railroad tracks to County Line.
Questions to Jason? I have a motion for, uh, uh, approve the financial commitment letter. Do we have that in the budget for next year, Jason? I think we do, don't we?
I know it was put in, the three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, thirty-four was put in because they reduced that this year to the million instead of the one point, or two million, I should say.
Okay.
I, I think that was in Commissioners, if I'm not mistaken.
Commissioners budget, yeah, I believe.
All right, my move that we approve the, uh, financial commitment letter for Community Crossings Matching Grant twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the commit, financial commitment letter to the Community Crossings, uh, Matching Grant Project twenty twenty-six, with the project that has been, uh, named. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, then on the additional paving projects that we did, uh, this year, uh, we still have to finish up on Ninth and Suter. Um, the shoulder material still needs to be added to those. We hope to get that done within the next couple of weeks, so should be everything.
All you got?
All I got.
I have one more item. The NDOT Bridge eighty-seven, eleventh road. It was a docu-sign to re, um, ratify your signature.
Oh. Uh, yeah, I forgot all about that.
Construction. Yeah.
That was the one you signed on, uh.
Twenty-nine. It's, it's right there at the end of September for Bridge eighty-seven.
So which bridge number was that again? I forget.
Uh, eighty-seven.
Eleventh road.
Or eleven.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve the docu-sign, uh, President signing, uh, docu-sign for Bridge eighty-seven, eleventh road?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Motion made second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You know, I wish they'd give us more than a day or two to do all this stuff.
Be nice.
And basically, if you don't do it, you lose the money.
Yes. It's a short window sometimes. It's a very short window.
Yes. Anything for Jason, anybody?
Oh. The only comments or phone calls I got over the last couple of weeks from it was from a lady out there by, uh, Sutter, and she said she's extremely grateful that we got in there to redo the road, but she did make the comment on the berms, which we got a solution to that right now. So I appreciate all the work you guys are doing out there, Jason. Thank you.
So if you could just give people like a, a, uh, ten thousand, fifty thousand foot view on, on what we've accomplished so far this, this year, and obviously we're just tying up odds and ends at this point. Um, how would you rate the year as far as how much we've gotten done and then how, how happy or unhappy are you with what we were able to get done?
I mean, I'm pretty happy with what we have got done this year. Um, one thing that's been somewhat challenging is it's been a lot of new people. I mean, it takes time to get used to do. It takes time to get used to doing some of those things.
Yeah.
Um, like I said before, we have a complete new paving crew. I mean, these guys have never been on a paper before, but they were willing to learn it. Um, and I've literally seen from start to finish how much better it has gotten. So that's the key, this is uh, if they stay, that's a twenty-five year investment. Which I think is huge if you can keep those employees on that, um. Likewise with our chip and seal crews, they've been together for a while and I think it shows uh, great dividends by them being together for as long as they have been. Um, with the updated end equipment and stuff, it does help, it makes things a lot better. Um, you're going to get a lot better performance out of what you do do. Uh, your quality of work is going to be much better. One of the big things we're running into now is the stone thing, uh, there's so many places that are using different stones right now, a lot of the pits. Your hard to find stone that we use. So, I mean, overall, I'm happy with what we've accomplished this year.
All right, and queuing us up for uh, for next year, what are you expecting to do between now and January first to get us ready for?
A lot of that would be burming some of the roads that we have, um, there's always brush. We're going to continue with the duripatcher, um, or total patcher, I should say. I think that's a very valuable tool, um. One thing that I've, want those guys to do when they do take that out is literally show which road that was on. Just for the simple fact, everybody can see exactly what that machine will do and how well it does perform. I think that's key. Um, going forward, any of the roads that we do do as far as chip and seal or newer roads that we have any blemishes on. By all means, that machine is by far the best, the best machine or best patch job you could possibly do. It is, it is durable.
And real, real quick, what's roughly our total mileage for the year so far?
Um, said and done, I'm gonna guess we're gonna be around eighty-five-ish, give or take. Time everything said and done.
Just for the public record, you had a couple in here about finishing next year. There are some spots, seventh, up in German Township from Fird to three thirty-one, which is the base coat.
Yes.
It's a little rough because like you said, it's first job they done and it's a base.
It is.
So it will be finished next year.
Yes, I, I mean, the thing is, we can't invest in it and just lay to go to the wayside, so whatever we have to do, we've already invested that time and money in it. Um, again, that was a pug mix road, first time they had experienced the pug mix. It is a little different monster. Um, but it has proven itself to be an extremely valuable asset to the county. Uh, the road's in better shape than it was, there's no question about that.
Yep.
But the writing on it is a little bit rougher. You always have the option come in next year of milling that off and leveling it out. So I mean, it's not something that can't be fixed, yes, there is an expense to it, but there would be anyway based upon what we're going to do next year.
And you, and you gotta practice somewhere, you can't just go out at the, at the highway garage.
You can't sit behind the machine, you literally have to see it firsthand and do it. And the other thing is they're willing to learn it, which is huge.
Yep.
It, like I say, it just takes time.
Well, on top of that, in, at least in German Township, we got a lot of soft bases up there.
We do.
So I'd rather have that laid over the winter. So we know if we got a soft base, we can go back and repair it before we put that top coat on. Because we want the finished product to last and look good.
And then, then, then that's what I was referring to, the same with um, up in Tiner on four B and Tamarack. That's a softer mix, so. If you wedge those in and basically that's what it is, it comes off the crown and it just puts in the slope. But if you're at eight, ten inches on the outside edge and you have trucks running over that again and stopping it, you're just setting and pushing it out.
Yeah.
As long as traffic flows, you're fine. It's the minute they stop. So it gives it that time to cure out and then give us an opportunity to come back next year then top off.
All right, good deal, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Tell the guys we appreciate the job they do.
Thank you.
Uh, Marshall County Hope, Tim, Tim Starr is back here. I want to upside down state your name and your title, please.
Sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. One for you, Mr. Starr. Angie, I'll have one for you when we're done, okay?
Yep.
I tried to send it out to you today and find your email address.
Good morning, folks, my name is Tim Starr, I'm the director of Marshall County Hope. And I wanted, it's been a while since I've been in and talked to you folks and brought you up to date on what Marshall County Ha- Hope has going on in the county. Uh, we have a lot of good things going on in the county. Right now, our most recent numbers, we did a needs assessment recently at the assistance of Beacon Health. Over in Bremen, we did needs assessment, our numbers are growing for people that need help with substance abuse. Uh, about six months ago, I reported in, there were sixty-one hundred people plus in the county that we thought had substance use disorder challenges. Uh, the new number is sixty-six forty. And as always, I like to say, this is uh, substance use in this county is not something that only affects one person. It's going to affect at least one other person and that's in a conservative estimate, so out of a county population of forty-eight thousand people. We have at least twelve to thirteen thousand people that are affected in some manner by substance abuse, which is a quarter of our county. It's very concerning. Uh, we have gone ahead and we are in the process of uh, doing some more organizational work with Marshall County Hope. Our mission statement is listed here, Marshall County Hope is a peer-led hub offering treatment, prevention, education, recovery support for substance use disorders. We embrace all pathways to recovery to help individuals overcome barriers, build recovery capital and take the next step. On their recovery journey, our vision sta- statement is very simple, Marshall County Hope envisions. A supportive community where individuals are empowered to lead healthy, fulfilling lives. Our main objectives with Marshall County Hope, uh, we have peer services, right now I have one peer coach that works with me, but I have. Two that are on loan from other organizations, we don't have a lot of money. So with uh, the help of Tammy Cotton Light Recovery over in Kosciusko County. She has a coach that she's assigned to this area and she's looking at possibly assigning a couple more. Bowen Health also has a coach here that's assigned to our team. Uh, we definitely need more coaches, which I'll get to in a second. Uh, we do collaboration and education to convene a consortium of community leaders and partners involved in supporting individuals in recovery, providing ongoing opportunities of, for collaboration and education. And then we share resources with people in different groups in the community to help people on their recovery journey. Uh, we do have our service offerings on here, uh, you can just keep that for your reference. But we provide a whole bunch of different services for the community, I like to focus on education, especially with kids, but these things all take um, money. We have a lot of partnerships, uh, there's two different groups to Hope, there's what I call Team Hope, that's our peer coaches. Uh, and then there's the consortium, the consortium is a list or a group of people in the community. They could be uh, religious affiliated, they could be um, health groups such as Bowen Health. Uh, Beacon Health, Saint Joe Health, uh, they all participate, we have the poor handmaids of. Uh, out at Ancillo that participate, we have Connie and Tom Stoll that participate, there's about forty different groups in the county that work with us. Um, Marshall County Corrections, J cap and several other organizations. And we're all working together to hopefully get control over our substance use challenges here. There is a chart here that shows the consortium. And uh, where I'm positioned in that, so I work with all those different agencies plus the team, providing services to the county. We did put a board in place on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, that was Dr. Kena Martinez with Beacon Health over in Bremen. Um, Greg Erickson Jr. out at uh, David's Courage. Kathy Schof with Everwise, Heather Green with Corrections, Owen Massing uh, with Avenue Recovery up in South Bend. Joe Morris, he's one of our public defenders here in town, I think everybody knows Joe, and then Nan Pomeroy. Uh, with Celebrate Recovery out at Wesleyan Church, they have an excellent program, last Tuesday night I had the uh, pleasure of going out there and seeing their program and they're doing great things for our community, I think the world of Doug and Nan. Uh, so, I did want to bring you up to date on some things that I've heard around the state, I attend meetings and um, I do have some concerns, a couple of small concerns. It appears that in some counties and some cities, people have made a stretch for the opioid settlement funding. And I think you all have probably seen exhibit, exhibit, exhibit E, which they have some recommendations on what it can be used for. And there seems to be a pattern of people in different cities and counties that will grab at one of those things that are in exhibit E. And they will put it on a pet project that they have for their city or county and then they try to qual- qualify for the opioid settlement funds. The only thing that I would like to do is I respectfully request that when you get people that apply for that money and obviously I'm going to be applying for some of that settlement funding. I am in the process of filling out a DHMA matching grant for up to a hundred and fifty thousand, that's um, Division to Mental Health and Addiction. Uh, so I'm hoping that we don't kind of peddle a lot of those opioid funds away when we can work some magic in the background and maybe get even more money for Marshall County. Uh, so basically what is happening with some of these people that are reaching is, like I said, they'll have their list of things that they want for their community, they'll cherry pick one of those things. And they'll put it in there and then away goes the money. So uh, my recommendation to you would be, try to look at the list of things. And find organizations or an organization that has a lot of those things, a lot of those suggestions that they're doing. Instead of just one item and it's so bad with some of the other cities and counties that they have to. Reach out to their county or city attorney and say, hey, do we qualify because of this? You know, when there's a list of thirty suggestions that you can use it for and somebody's stretching it, they have to reach out to a Sean somewhere and say, do you think this qualifies? It probably is a big stretch, it should be pretty obvious when you look at exhibit E. All right, any questions?
I would say, I know that uh, um, I have been outspoken on the opioid settlement funds in the past and I, I think primarily um, my uh. Making comment on that was because at that time I was president of the council. And uh, those are the folks that uh, that make the decisions when it comes to how we spend our money, so I would, I would actually encourage you to take a presentation to the county council and uh. You know, they're going to be the ones that are going to appropriate that money. Um, I don't think we're going to be signing a contract or putting together a long-term agreement, which would be the commissioner's role in a process like that, so. Um, I, I certainly, you know, hear what you're saying and I, I think that there's a lot of validity to what you're saying and I, I think that it's something that the council should uh, fully consider as they uh, look how to budget these funds.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jesse, I, I do plan on talking to them. And, and I'm going to talk to the city council as well, make sure they're on board.
Uh, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Any idea what that grant match might be percentage wise?
Uh, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I mean.
A hundred percent. There's one, one to one.
It's one to one?
Yes.
One to one, okay, wow.
Yes. So I'm, I'm out there digging and then I, I'm also working on four or five other grants too, so we could get a lot of money here if we manage the money that we already have properly.
Which, I, I know we've been pretty stingy with that mu- the opioid money, but it's worth purpose, um, especially looking at the cost within CASA. And some of the cases going through there, which is why we're holding on really tight to kind of see how, what our numbers, we're looking for that. Um, any idea what our recidivism rate is for our treatment program now?
Uh, it, it varies and so does our clientele, um, you know, ideally if I could hit seventy, eighty percent. I would be happy with that, we have some people though, Adam, that it takes maybe five, six times to go through the program. Uh, so that's a challenge, everybody's different. Uh, when I first came on, we had thirty clients, a month ago we had seventy. Uh, and we're back down in the mid thirties this week, so um, and it's, I didn't realize this when I took this position, but it's. It's a seasonal challenge, you know, you would expect to see some consistent numbers, but certain parts of the year, the numbers go up and down. Um, I have needed three emergency beds in the last month. And guess what day of the week people approached me for an emergency bed?
Friday?
Yes, sir, Friday. So what I've done is I've canceled my Friday meetings and I, I leave Fridays open for emergencies now, it's, I just have to do business that way.
People get paid and uh.
What's that?
It's, it's payday, right, is that uh?
Uh, no, no, I don't think that's it, I think it's because maybe people, and, and I thought heavily about that, Jesse, I, I think it's because. A lot of people um, during the week, they move around and then they try to get settled in someplace. Or maybe they're released from being in jail and then it hits Friday that their friends aren't going to be there to help them or they're not going to get support from the community, so they reach out to us.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I, 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 you know, I really try to keep an open mind myself when people ask us for help, we'll help anybody that asks for help, that's part of our job, yes, sir.
As far as emergency beds, where do those people end up getting taken to?
So those take a lot of work, uh, we took one to Kokomo, we took one to Princeton and we took one, um. We took one to South Bend, so I have to reach out to people, I have to reach out to Light Recovery over in um, Kawakowski. Uh, Kosciusko County, uh, and I have to reach out to other counties in the state because we don't have beds here for that.
I'm hoping we can address that with Bowen, with Bowen's new facility up there in Bremen.
Yeah.
And that's substance abuse related or mental health related?
It can be both. Most of the time, Adam, it's substance use.
They go to a bed like that, usually how long are they there?
Well, uh, Bowen, right now, if we take them over by Columbia City over there at their facility, they go in, they don't get a bed, but they can stay, it's a twenty-four hour facility stand. And they let them sit in big couches and things like that, but they can only stay for a day. Now, if I get them an emergency bed at a recovery cafe someplace, that can be anywhere from three days to maybe thirty days. And especially if we can get them into a program with that particular facility.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Tim. Moving on, Mr. Gurling has a public safety grant request.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. We did take delivery of our drones. And um, unfortunately, I was in the, in the process of purchasing those. I was misinformed, I guess is a good way to put it, uh, on the education process. And uh, certi- training certification process. Uh, I was under the impression that Purdue University would provide that training free of charge. And they don't, um, so I've reached out to a couple drone operators at our local sheriff's department. And they've offered to assist us in doing that training. Um, you can see that DART Drone is a organization that offers the training. And then there's a testing certification process through the FAA. And under unmanned uh, aircraft operations. Uh, I included a list of um, folks that across the county. Of each department that uh, has created or voiced some interest in uh, training and certification. And I went ahead and put uh, the EMA Director, Jack Garner on there as well. So I'm asking for uh, I'd take forty-five hundred dollars to cover that training and, and um. Certification out of that uh, grant funds.
Just to be, just to be clear, you told me that's would come out of the hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Public safety money?
That's correct.
We have set aside already.
Yes.
Just to make sure we clarified so public understood what we're doing.
Sure.
Any comments, questions from John?
Um, knowing that this was coming this morning, I did uh, speak with uh, Brianna Sloniger at Purdue Extension because I do know that they do. Um, some drone training as well, um, and she thought that they could offer something um, for you guys at a hundred and fifty dollars per person or less. Um, so I would uh, encourage you to check with her and see um. What, what options they have available and, and whether or not that would be competitive with what you're expecting to get. Um, in this set, cause that could be um. What, up to about eighteen hundred dollars in savings if that hundred dollar version would work for you guys, obviously I'm not the expert on it, so I wouldn't be able to. Okay, so obviously I'm not the expert and I can't tell you whether what she laid out would, would meet your needs, but it, it might be good to check in with them and, and see what uh, what options they have, so.
I have spoken to Breezy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Flonaker. Uh Flonaker. And uh they started out at two hundred dollars a person and she said, I'm sure we could get that down. Uh but that doesn't include the testing. Uh so the testing is on top of that.
Okay.
The seven hundred dollars is for all the folks. I I had heard that before and I jumped on that too.
I thought you talked to her. I thought you talked to her.
Yes, I had.
We got started.
Any questions? Go ahead.
All right, so. Looking, looking at this and I I know I talked to you a little before the meeting, John, or um. And I apologize for kind of blindsiding you a little bit, maybe. However. There's no guarantee you get your FAA stuff until after you pass the exam. Uh and I'm looking at other possible ways maybe to. Fund this for you. I know we still got, I see a got a couple Tyner guys on here. Our guys from the Tyner um air department.
That's correct.
And to date, right now, we still have art art money hanging out there that they have not used.
Half.
Actually, I'm not sure that is art money. The first portion was art money.
Township is. Their remaining balance.
And. Because we lose that money at the end of the year, if they do not utilize that.
You you can't change the intent of the money.
Right, it's been.
The intent of it uh was for them to purchase items for themselves. I don't know if you can change the agreement. Because you can move the agreement from one to another, but you can't change the intent of the agreement per the federal guidelines. So if they were intending to buy personal like PPE, giving them drone training is not the same. I don't know how the federal government would would look at that.
They they have purchased radios. Uh and that has been invoiced. I've communicated with the uh township trustee, uh Jerry Lamb. Uh on more than one occasion and asked him to pay that bill. That's all he needs to do is pay the bill and then submit the paperwork to Angie and that money will be used.
Okay, so we. We have something hanging out there. They just haven't. Okay.
We have uh Plymouth is committed. Uh they're in the process of uh new radios. The only one that is not really is Culver. And I've tried to communicate with their fire chief a couple times, so.
I know from talking to one of the guys on the list on this that uh down in Culver, they're expecting to do the training. Um or at least he's been told about the training.
Right, I've communicated with all of them.
I may wanna change this. I almost would like to change it up and. Ask the fire departments pay for the training upfront and then once everybody on the list pass. Come back and reimburse that to make sure we got people that passed. Because we. If we prove this upfront, not everybody passed the test. It's kind of for not.
I I'm not sure they can take the test without paying upfront though.
Well, that's why I'm asking for the fire departments or township trustees.
Okay.
Occur the initial costs and come back. We reimburse them out of the grant possibly off the people who actually passed the test first time. Because you can take the test so many times and the only the only reason I know this is I was looking at getting certified on drone stuff a couple years ago. You can take the test. If you fail your, I think you can take the test up to twice before you have to sit. If you don't pass it, then you have to sit out for a year. Year or so before you can take it again.
Ask the fire chief to choose folks that would be committed for the education and the testing. Um I don't know what else I can do.
Uh I I I understand that, John, this. But I I'd rather do a reimbursement than an up for an initial. That's that's my opinion on it.
Think that's reasonable. My problem is now I've got the training scheduled for November eighth to ninth. And to do logistics to get that squared away and coordinated, that's gonna be a challenge, but I I guess that.
Your guys' thoughts?
I was, it it is forty-five hundred dollars.
Well, we've got the drones. We've got the drones.
We do. We have possession of the drone.
And I guess it it might be a a test case to see, you know, if we pay it upfront, uh what level of uh success? We get out of this. I I guess I guess would be the request is maybe could you follow up with this? Um ninety days after the uh um after the training and let us know. What percentage of the folks actually actually passed the test?
Well, no, my other. My other question would be, and I don't know if the numbers are there off the top of my head. We have the money in the EMA budget right now to pull up from EMA. Cover the cost.
No, I don't think so.
There's not much extra money in there.
Yeah.
This will have to come out of the public safety grant. That's what it was earmarked for, these kind of projects at a hundred thousand.
Yep. And we're still, we're still good on the budget in that uh that fund?
There's twenty-six thousand dollars in there, somewhere around there, according to what Mrs. Merkmyer said.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can get some follow up on this and use this as a test case for for how we would apply this in the future, I I I could support it today.
I think my plan is truly to give you an update on all the trainings that we've precipitated or that we facilitated and uh. Uh just to let you know that your money's not going to waste.
I think. I think that's all Adam is asking for, trying to make sure the money doesn't go to waste.
Believe me, I I I'm making sure that doesn't happen. I'm kind of a pain in their backside, if you know what I mean.
That would never happen, John.
Trust me. Always.
Hey, I can verify that. So what do you think, Adam?
I personally, I still like to do the reimbursement, but uh I'm only one of three. So it. I know we're splitting hairs here, but.
Do you wanna have everything rescheduled? Which is gonna delay everything to get them things out operational?
One of the things is we've got the drones and they're just sitting there. They're not being used.
I think we need to get people trained and get them. Get them out there. Because if an emergency happens, we have them. We got the drones sitting there, nowhere to fly them.
From uh the sheriff's department the other day, I I understand that. There was a fourteen year old young lady missing and they were hoping to put their hands on those to. For the thermal imaging to try to locate that individual.
Of course.
They're not in service yet.
I will make the motion to uh approve the request.
You comfortable with it? Could we get? Is there a way we can get an agreement? Where? By paying for the sub front, if anybody fails that test. We can get that money.
You you can. You think the fire department township trustees are gonna pay us back? I think that agreement is pretty much impossible.
Like I said, I I think this is this is the test case for us to see how successful this is. If it doesn't go well, then we can adjust our processes in the future, but. It's a trust but verify thing, right?
All volunteers that give their time every day to to serve their communities.
With it?
Yeah.
Is that a second?
Yeah, that's a second.
Motion made, motion made second to go ahead and approve the agreement uh for forty-five hundred dollars. To from training for the drones and certifications. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Sorry to be so difficult.
It's the process, John.
Mike, come on up here a minute, Mike.
John, before you fly those things, be sure I got the. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Get them under policy. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item is treasurer, Wendy. Come on up. Good morning. You seem to be smiling a lot lately.
Yeah. The office is looking great.
Roller forward.
Yes, um I'm here this morning to ask if we could bring back the extended hours for our taxpayers. Um. I sent out an email. I don't know if you guys seen that for Saturday, November first, from nine to twelve. Um Thursday, November sixth until six PM. And Monday, the due date, um stay open till six PM as well.
That was the.
Yep, Monday the tenth, yep.
And that's still, that's what we did before, just. We have any more hours than that.
And this is for the treasurer, the auditor and the assessor, yes.
And I um checked with each department and they are on board with having these extended hours as well. I did have um several taxpayers ask, you know, why we weren't doing the Saturday especially cuz a lot of people work. Eight to five and can't get in here. Um they really would like that to come back, so. I don't know if that would be okay if we go ahead and.
Do you have that in your budget for the overtime?
Um I won't be paying. My girls right now in the office are new.
Okay.
So they would rather have um comp time.
Okay.
Because they're very limited on that, so they would not be taking overtime.
Okay.
The the amount of overtime that is in the treasurer's budget was in the treasurer's budget when I was there and it, even with long term employees, it. It's still, they would take the comp time.
Yeah.
So you you wanted to add a Saturday on here as well, or?
That's what we did in the past as well, um just three hours.
Which which date would that be?
That would be the first.
Okay, all right.
So you got Thursday, what date? What's that again?
The November sixth. That's a Thursday before the due date.
Yep.
And then the November first is um actually. Two weeks. There's a Saturday in between, but we'd be open on the first instead. And then um the due date on Monday, November tenth, we would stay open till six.
Those hours get. Published when they get their bill or is it uh?
Yeah, it does. I was gonna do uh a news media release and then also Facebook. And just try to get the word out that they'll be, that we'll be open.
All right, well, I move that we approve the request for extended hours for the applicable departments on November first, November sixth and November tenth.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the extended hours. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Marshall County Economic Development, Greg. Please, for the record, state your name and title.
Sure. Good morning. Uh Greg Newland with the Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. I have a third quarter update here for you. Uh not a very uh extensive one, but just a couple of local numbers for you. Uh locally, we are at just about two hundred million dollars in capex investment in the county. Uh we've created about two hundred and thirty jobs with that investment. Uh. Currently, we're working on four active attraction projects. Uh traction projects are bringing in new industry to the uh uh county. Uh we also have six active uh retention and expansion projects. These are uh. Uh manufacturers that are expanding their operations here in the county. Uh we're also working with most of our communities in the county on housing uh to help attract developers. There's uh some ish, some problems, difficulties at attracting developers to work on some of these projects that. They're not uh of the scale that uh some of our uh neighboring communities have and it's it's hard to attract the developers. So we're working with them on that. Uh recently, we did a ribbon cutting at the Marshall County Career Innovation Center. Uh that's now uh up and running. Uh they have an a a. Oh, yeah. The latest addition is the automotive uh lab. They can teach automotive truck repair. Uh that's not just for uh students. It's also, there'll be some adult training in there. Uh we're we're excited. Along the workforce development, uh Ancilla is looking at adding and they're trying trying to do a market research. On um if a four year business degree, they have two four year programs right now. They are looking at expanding it into business if that would, if there's much need for that, much, if they get much uh mileage out of it. So we're working with them on that. Uh for, this is good news for us is unwinding of the aquatic center has been completed. Uh um. It's really invigorated that the uh not-for-profit that's actually running the aquatic center. They've they've kind of uh reorganized and hit the ground running and they're doing a great job out there. But uh. You probably have seen out on Pioneer Road, SDC is a diecast corporation. They're doing some hiring right now. They're looking for production to start this quarter. Uh probably about thirty, thirty-five employees to to get started out there. Um we're excited about that. American Container just is in the process right now of receiving a uh business personal property tax abatement. On uh over five million dollars in equipment. Uh this is uh to expand their printing for the pharmaceutical industry. The American Container has been doing some uh. Pharmaceutical work with uh, for instance, all the Pfizer vaccines uh during the COVID that went out were in their their packaging. And uh the pharmaceutical industry is very tight as far as their uh tolerances on packaging in that. And they are one of the few that do it. Uh Southwire announced that they are uh continuing their expansion over there this quarter. Uh another um close to. I think it's eighty million dollars in uh expansion over there that it's over in that low voltage uh part. That's the the extension across the road there, so uh we're excited about that. They are currently our number one employer in the county and they're looking at it, you know, a hundred more over there, so. Uh CT Palm, we're in Bourbon, uh is also expanding their operation. Now, if you drive by, you probably won't be able to see it. It's kind of in the back back there, but they're adding close to a hundred thousand square foot. Uh and uh they are gonna be doing more compounding. Right now, they're doing a lot of recycling of of uh polymers. And they do do some compounding, but they are going to expand that part of their operation with more employees, of course. B and G uh. The council approved a uh tax abatement. Uh I believe that was earlier this year, the end of last year. Uh they continue to work on that expansion. You probably haven't seen a lot of work. It's been interior. They're, they've had some change in their uh partnerships and their financing, so uh they, I'm in touch with them right now. They wanna extend that cuz there's EDA, the extension of two years. They think that they're gonna start earnest in the end of twenty-five and end of twenty-six, so we're gonna see if we can get that EDA extended just a little bit. Uh Sequel Wire Construction is still underway. They're they're building down there. Uh Ten and Thirty-One Design is scheduled for release here anytime soon. Uh we don't know. We we have a good, strong feeling what it'll look like, but we don't know for sure. Uh I was attending a US Thirty-One Coalition meeting a couple weeks ago. Um funding for NDOT is is the big. Uh they they don't have the funding to do some of the jobs they've already lit uh let out, so uh there's some concern. That uh there, so. But what's gonna happen at thirty-one, we don't know for sure. Um the dunes down in Culver should start leasing this quarter. Uh that project's. Uh there's two phases to that project. Phase one is coming right along on schedule and then depending on the demand for uh. The housing as to how quickly they start on phase two, but all indications are they'll start pretty quickly on that. Uh they've, Culver's also put out an RFP for downtown development. Um. We'll see what kind of returns they get. It's pretty exciting uh work they're doing down there. Um. Moment at the airport, there's been a lot of discussion out at airport. You've probably seen the uh taxiway that's was added recently. Um. A lot of airports, you kind of take that for granted that they have that, that amenity already, but this is gonna add a lot of uh. Get a lot of use out of the taxiway. They're expanding out there for education. I looked for a big announcement later this week. On uh the educational part of that programming out at the airport. Um. The uh. Also, we've applied for a grant to uh develop some of the industrial ground. That's already zoned industrial. Out on Pioneer, it's just a matter of getting city utilities out there. Uh that should be. Uh that engineering report is due any day now, so we'll look for that. Um we're continuing to work with La Paz on uh development up there on things we can do to uh improve that for development. And then uh. I think that that's pretty much it. If I can answer any questions, if there's anything I missed, let me know.
I just have one, thirty-one to ten. Uh I know. Anything news on the?
On thirty-one to ten?
Well, no, on the uh just south. Or we're gonna get cut off at the knees?
Oh, uh for the the. No, I, we we continue to talk to NDOT about, you know, what we're gonna do there. Uh they seem to be entertaining right turn onlys, uh although I'm not sure that's the most effective way to. Get that done, but it is not completely shut off. The big thing is the railroad, you know, what we can do. I know earlier there was some talk about improving. I know earlier there was some talk about improving some rail crossings in the county. Um, if you ask my opinion, there's two rail crossings in the county, Argus that needed attention before those, those other two. So if the rail's gonna, improving any crossings, that one on Park Street and the one on Linden Road are desperately needed, so.
Right. Anybody have any more questions?
Go ahead.
I, I got a couple of questions. Um, may, maybe you know here Greg, for the Marshall County Innovation Center, what do we have up and running out there besides automotive?
Oh boy, oh, they have, um, well, let's see, they, they have the nursing, they have the uh, firefighting, um. There, I think there is their criminology out there, uh, oh, as far as advanced manufacturing, they have CNC, advanced manufacturing, welding, ag tech, uh, vet tech, child, early child care. Um, I know that the adult education, which is uh, probably, I mean, I, I, I am involved in all of it and encourage all of it. But the adult, I really wanna push, cause that's been a area of concern. Uh, he's done a fantastic job. Uh, his numbers because of uh, ICE, I, I, I don't know how else to put it, you know, has, have, has been affected. So uh, he's, he's looking at uh, things to do there, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Alright, and, and what else, I have another question here. Alright, got sidetracked. Um, I'm good, I'm good for that.
If you think, my office always, give me a call, I know Jesse has my, I think y'all have my text number, my gym number, give me a call anytime, I don't mind it. Um, I, if you don't mind getting a return at an odd hour either.
Hey, thank you Greg.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, next up, we have the uh, or, excuse me, attorney report.
John? Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, first, uh, we have a resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, uh, adopting provisions of Indiana Code five dash twenty-three dash one regarding public-private agreements. Um, so this is a, a, a chapter in the Indiana Code that um, allows for governments to utilize the special procurement method for projects and services. Uh, if they adopt a resolution that says we're adopting this portion of the state code. And uh, the public-private agreements statutes allow for um, a process where um, you can put out a RFP to potential uh, contractors or uh, service providers and say, hey, we're interested in this type of a project. Um, grade the RFPs, pick somebody that you'd like to work with. And then um, work with that person to develop the project, develop a scope of and cost for it. And then work to uh, uh, come up with a guaranteed maximum price for the project. So it's a little bit different um, as compared to other project procurement laws. Like the, the most basic one is the uh, design bid build, like we do with road projects where you might engage a uh, engineer to design the project, they'll give you an estimate of what they think it's gonna cost, but then you put it out to bid and you're left with, if you wanna do it, you have to accept the lowest responsible bid. This allows you a little more control on the front end to work directly with um, the provider that uh, is gonna be ultimately building it. Uh, work through costs and uh, you know, if, if you find out the cost is gonna be more than what your budget was, uh, work with them to see how you can adjust the project to be within budget. Uh, before you actually pull the trigger on, on doing something, so. Um, the idea of this is just to adopt the, the state statutes, so that this is another tool in your toolbox in the future. If you wanna utilize this, there's not any pressing projects. Although um, Commissioner Falsted and I were invited to a meeting uh, out with Jason Peters at the Highway Department sometime in the last month. Um, and uh, E and B Paving, one of the road paving contractors, uh, just wanted to share how they've worked with uh, another company. It's called G, GM, um, I can't think of the name, but the guy's name is Greg Martz and his company is called GM, it's initial something. And uh, he's a, a guy that is um, a separate company that's worked with counties all over the state. Um, and has a lot of experience utilizing this um, procurement method and, and uh, has worked with E and B on some of these projects uh, in various counties. So they just wanna kind of show how they've used it in other counties and how it could potentially uh, be something that Jason might wanna consider for future highway projects. Uh, but if, if we get to the point, um, assuming you adopt this and it becomes an available procurement method, if, if we get down the road and, and there's actually a pending project, I think we'd probably invite, um, you know, somebody like that Greg Martz to come and share more broadly his experience of how it's been used around the state. But happy to answer any question.
Sounds like one more tool in our toolbox to, to help um, take the highway program forward a little bit.
More than just, it'd be more than just highway, it, this could fit about anything.
Yes, yeah.
So. Cause essentially, essentially during the presentation, it sounds like a really good tool for, to have in the toolbox. So if you got a small project, you wanna be, that you need to get done or trying to get done, say it's normally a twenty-five thousand dollar project and we only got fifteen thousand dollars on the budget, or that we have available to us. We can go out to companies, have them tailor a plan to meet our budgetary goals as opposed to what would our, it would be if you had to bid it out. So it gives us the ability to use taxpayer dollars wisely, maximize value of that in otherwise situations where we might not be able to get a project done.
So it's like, it's like a bidding process, but it's backwards.
Essentially.
Yeah, okay.
So any more questions, discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
Motion made in second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we need that on one, or just one reading on that, Rashawn?
I just, yeah, just one reading.
Make sure.
Okay, and then the next thing is this exhibit license agreement for the county museum. And uh, Mike Miley's here, I don't know if you have any questions or if I get anything wrong, chime in and correct me. But uh, Mike had presented this uh, to me last, last week, that uh, there's gonna be a traveling exhibit, the, or on loan exhibit that the museum is gonna be displaying. And one of the requirements from the people loaning the exhibit materials uh, was uh, to have a signature on a uh, exhibit to their contract that said basically the, they had the agreement of the building owner uh, to this. And uh, the museum signed off on it, but recognizing that they're formerly not the owner of the building, uh, we're just asking for you to ratify uh, Mike's signature on that exhibit to, to the agreement. I've reviewed the agreement and the exhibit and everything seemed to be in order. Uh, we just wanted to document that the bill, actual building owner had approved of, of that.
Uh, would Mike's signature be on or are the commissioners?
So Mike has already signed it to get it uh, blowing and in process. I think that was part of the, the exhibit's gonna be open soon here, isn't it, you wanna come on up?
Mike Miley, President, Marshall County Historical Society, I think that's what I'm here for. It's, uh, um, as, as Sean mentioned, the uh, National DAR uh, has this traveling exhibit. And they've made it available to our local uh, DAR chapter, the uh, Tippecanoe River Wythogon chapter of the DAR, who they have no space to put this exhibit up. And the exhibit's titled, is titled, American Revolution Experience. It's part of the America Two Fifty uh, celebration that's going on. And, and they made it available to us and um, they sent us this agreement. And I went through the, the insurance and indemnification agreements and I didn't like some of that, so we got some of that language removed. Where uh, we're responsible for it in transit and all this, this kind of thing. Um, we got that removed and then I went ahead and I'm thinking, okay, sign it, I'm signing it as the president of the historical society, whoops, it's the property owner. Um, as Sean mentioned, that you feel maybe just ratifying my signature to that agreement would be okay? The cap, the, the Historical Society has insurance to cover liability and everything. County's named as an additional insured on our policy, plus the county uh, has that, that property listed on your policy. So we've really got double, double coverage here, so that's really not an issue. But as far as the legal, you, Sean thinks that the ratification.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, and you've already signed and submitted this, cause it's starting.
Not submitted yet, that's why I'm waiting, waiting, we need to do it, cause we're supposed to pick the exhibit up, I think Friday.
Right.
And we'll have it for a little over two weeks.
Okay. Basically, our motion would be just allow you to sign on behalf of the commissioners.
Yep, I think that's fine.
Alright, well I move that we uh, um, ratify uh, Mike's signature on this document and allow him to sign on behalf of the commissioners on this document only.
Second. Motion made second to allow uh, Mr. Miley to sign on behalf of the commissioners on this document, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Whoops, and I, one more thing, I received an invitation from the DAR, uh, they're gonna have a kind of a grand opening, I was supposed to give it to all you guys this morning, but I forgot to print it off, so I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you, thanks Mike. Thank you. Anything else, Sean?
Uh, just on Friday morning, we have the uh, hearing uh, in the, the Tom McFadden uh, on his motion to dismiss a couple of the, the claims in, in our complaint in that litigation. So um, I should have an update for you on how that went later on Friday.
Okay.
Next question for you real quick, and um, I know that uh, the Regional Sewer Board had a deadline of uh, October third to submit their revised proposal to IDAM um, in response to our petition to dissolve the district. Um, could you follow up with IDAM for us and see if we can get a public records copy of whatever it was the sewer district submitted to them?
Yes, I will do that for a break.
Anything else, you have anything, Rashawn?
Not right now, no.
Okay. See, we'll move on, thank you for that report. Uh, Angie, honor report.
I have your September fifteenth minutes.
I move to approve the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
Second.
Motion made second to approve September fifteenth minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have the AP claims.
I move to approve the accounts payable claims as presented.
Second. Motion made second, prove the accounts payable claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Last thing I have is payroll.
I move to approve the payroll claims, second.
Motion made second, prove payable claims, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else? I believe that's it?
That's it.
Okay, uh, public comments, anyone here have any comments, anything on your mind? Please uh, remember three minutes, time limit. I want to, Mr. Shattick.
Yep.
State your name and title.
Uh, Brandon Shattick, one nine nine, two one, Ninth Road, Plymouth, Indiana. Uh, also county council member, but I'm speaking to you today about the Public Defender Board. And um, we had our first meeting and the um, uh, we approved the, I just blanked on the comprehensive plan, thank you. We've approved the comprehensive plan for the county. Um, us board members signed it, we have sent it down to the Indiana Commission on Court Appointed Attorneys. And uh, they have a, um, in their next meeting, they will officially approve it. We did this on the basis of it is impacted now, it's approved now, but will be implemented in twenty twenty-six. And um, so we believe this is gonna be a great program for the county. Uh, we budget over three hundred thousand dollars a year for um, uh, public defenders. And so it is a substantial cost to the county to, uh, for pauper counsel. And this program will enable us to get approximately forty percent uh, reimbursement on a lot of these cases. So um, not every case gets a reimbursement, there's some minor misdemeanors that don't qualify for that. Uh, it holds our um, it holds our, our courts and uh, our public defenders to uh, to a standard, which pretty much is already done. Yeah, if you've never tried a murder case, you are not gonna be put on a murder trial, obviously, I mean, there's standards. And then this program it um, lays all that out uh, for us. And again, that's something that our courts have already done and adhere to. And um, so it, it's a good program, uh, I think uh, it's going to uh, be a real financial benefit to the county. Hopefully, that's our whole goal here, is get the reimbursement and uh, uh, save the county some money, uh, so.
And, and just for, just for clarification, if I remember right, from the, the debate when we were uh, creating the organization, we do get a forty percent reimbursement for expenses related to public defense, but we also do need, we are gonna be required to pay our public defenders slightly more.
Yeah, so in the first quarter, um, when we start this in twenty twenty-six, I don't think we're gonna see, uh, well, I mean, of course, it all depends on how many uh, uh, pauper trials there are, you know, are, are assigned in that first quarter. But potentially, we could see that uh, we're paying more money and then we'll get uh, that forty percent uh, reimbursement come quarter two. And you know, we're, we're just seeing it, Fulton County does this, I believe, uh, St. Joe, most of the counties around us are in this uh, program and, and take advantage of the reimbursement. I mean, you look at the um, uh, the Delphi murders, um, that was in the millions of dollars that that cost the county. And uh, when you can get forty percent reimbursement on anything, I mean, if, if the attorney, the public defender needs to hold an investigation and pay investigators or get uh, whether it be, you know, medical examinations and things of that nature, that is all incorporated into the cost of that, that we can get some reimbursement on, so.
And under, under normal conditions, it looked like we could save somewhere, somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars a year under normal conditions.
I mean, when you're, when you're looking at nearly four hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, budgeted for this and, and get, you know, forty percent back on a lot of it. I mean, it's, it's can be a substantial saving for the, for the county. I mean, that's what we're all looking at, that's the judge's goals, that's councils and commissioners' goal here is, is looking to, to be a part of this program. And a lot of it, uh, a couple of things, there's two different ways to run this uh, program. You could actually, certain counties like Fulton County, I believe, has a uh, a person who actually administrates it. So it's not just a judge who keeps track of the workload, because there's workload restrictions on how many cases you can take. Uh, whether it be like, uh, if it's a class D felony, you can only do so many of those cases and you'd be considered full-time. Um, so they keep track of the, the workloads, um, and, and what each of these attorneys can handle. And, and still give good service to uh, their uh, their clients. So uh, it's gonna cost us more, it's a pay raise, it makes us competitive with the uh, the, the concern of our uh, judges was with the attorney shortages. Uh, this, this puts us in a competitive stance, because um, if you can make more, go into Cosiasko County and serve it as a public defender there, you're gonna drive through Marshall County to get there and make more money. So we're gonna be competitive on that. And uh, like I said, it's gonna cost us more uh, upfront, and then we're gonna start getting the reimbursements and hopefully it's gonna pay off in the end, that's what we're looking for.
Basically, this is like an insurance policy, we have a Delphi. Well, I was in that first presentation the state made and basically that's not how you have to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, you are, this isn't, this isn't uh, out of the goodness of our heart, this is, uh, you are issued an attorney and that is, and we gotta pay for it, so.
For clarification, the Delphi situation that we're talking about was a gentleman who uh, yes, murdered the two little gurgles. And that was, it turned into a capital murder case, where they're, they were seeking the death penalty. And the amount of money they spent down there for public defense would put a hurting on any county about our size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Millions of dollars.
Yeah.
So that forty percent reimbursement is a nice thing to have available to us.
Thank you for bringing us the update, thank you for your work on that, and yeah, this'll save the taxpayers some money. And also it will make sure that uh, that the folks that are in the system have the confidence of knowing that they're getting quality representation as well, so.
I, it's, I think it's a good thing, yes sir, thank you guys.
Anyone else have any public comments? Wanna?
No, I would.
I'd be shocked if you didn't.
Yeah, there you go. So uh.
Name your name.
Bill Woodward, one two zero nine four Peach Road, Plymouth. Any updates that you can express?
Not, other than what Sean's already said.
Yep. Um, with this all done, I would like to discuss the drone situation with you, though. I was a drone pilot, certified pilot, so I can give you a little bit of, of. Certified pilot, so I can give you a little bit of updates and how that process goes and everything, if if you so desire. Um, so, um, and one of the things. The test isn't all that bad to get certified by F A A. If somebody doesn't pass. They can always pay for that second go around, instead of the county paying for that. You know, so there there are options and and I've gone through it, so if you've got any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks for everything you guys do, everything, not just, you know, my issue, but everything.
Thank you. Anyone else have any, any comments? Seeing now, we're gonna move on to the commissioner items, uh, we have. Second reading on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four vacating the alley northwest blocks of fifteen to eighteen in Tiner. We approved that on first reading last meeting. Any discussion or emotion?
Uh, do we have to open a public hearing on this one?
No, no.
And I would, I would say since we didn't receive any public feedback, at least I haven't, on uh any of these things that are sitting on second reading. I would suggest that we suspend the rules on these and then and pass them on seconds and thirds if uh, unless you guys have any objections to that.
I'll do that.
All right.
Have a second.
Well, I'm, I'm, I move that we uh suspend the rules and pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Um, hold on, yep, I'll take those in order, I guess.
Twenty-five days twenty-four.
Okay, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, uh, vacating the alleyway northwest of blocks fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. And the addition to Tiner City Polk Township, Marshall County.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the vacation of alleys, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four in Tiner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Then we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, which is the establishment of court-appointed special advocates, basically CASA. We proved that on first reading last time.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we again suspend the rules and pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. Um, establishing the court-appointed special advocates department. On second and third reading.
Second, motion made seconded uh to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five day twenty-three on what suspended rules for readings two and three. That's the CASA program, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item is uh, second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five establishing the purpose of the Epic Fund. Forty-nine oh four. I will tell you just a little clarification. Uh. I was in the, in, involved in the meeting with this before we brought this fund here. I had questions myself, but this was set up a state program years ago. That was put under the direction of the Health Department. And so basically, it's monitoring, and Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, anything we do will have to be uh basically be approved by. The Health Board or Dowell Column.
Yes.
For that money can be dispersed.
And we have to have something in place that gives us the authority to spend anything out of there, which is what the ordinance would do.
Yes. All right, so that's just clarification, I know uh Tim Star made the comment of. Everybody sees money and wants it, well, I got news for you, it's not just opioid funds, so.
Yep, well, I move that we uh suspend the rules and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. Estem- establishing the purpose of the Epic Fund four nine zero four on second and third reading.
Second. Motion made second to uh. Move on second and third reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five establishing the purpose of the Epic Fund forty-nine oh four, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We have on here the purchase four oh one West Jefferson Street Plymouth, and I think we've already done most of that, haven't we, or something else we need to do, Sean, I'm not aware of?
No.
Uh, just so people know, it's, we went through the process, that will be uh going for the council a week from today on the thirteenth. For funding, uh, should that uh be approved, which I expect it will be, uh, we will uh. Hopefully getting that closed here before long, so, but we'll have a chance to get moved in.
Yeah, it looks like our uh um. Estimates or the the appraisals came in, and both of those were well above the uh, the.
One, one thirty, about seventy-five, is that what they were, the two estimates we got?
And we're, we're looking at a purchase under fifty thousand dollars on that.
Thousand.
Fifty thousand, so yeah, about, about a third the cost of of the appraised value, so.
Yeah, that's about what it is.
Yeah.
And I've worked with Bowen's attorney, we have a purchase agreement ready to, for signature as soon as the council approves the funding, so.
Is that just one or all three signatures?
Uh, just for your signature.
So I suppose if that's the case, do we need to do that now? Approve me, Sean? Or do we need to wait till next meeting?
We may have already approved in the last meeting you doing what was necessary, but. If not, we, it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and do that, just so that uh. We can get to closing and you can handle whatever needs to happen.
Right, well, I move that we uh authorize the president to to sign on behalf of the board, um, the uh. Purchase and closing documents related to the acquisition of four oh one West Jefferson Street pending the approval of the council.
Second, motion made second to allow the board president to sign on behalf of the board. Uh, any closing uh agreements for four oh one West Jefferson, Jefferson, pending council approval, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the twenty twenty-six schedule. Uh, meetings, holiday and payroll. Anything you wanna say, Angie, or?
No, it's, it's basically identical to what this year's was for the schedule, the holidays are the same that the state of Indiana has. It does include, excuse me, the elections because state statute did. Change to require county clerk's offices to be closed. And so the county, whole county would be because of the, how we work with all the departments.
Right. Any comments, discussion?
Real quick, what, what date is New Year, or what date is uh Christmas Eve for all this coming year?
Uh, it'll be on a Thursday.
Perfect.
I'm not gonna ask. So, do I have any uh?
I'm.
This is basically the holidays. Uh, first is holiday schedule, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-six schedules for meetings, holiday and payroll, second.
Motion made in second to approve all three meetings, holiday and payroll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, we have uh ARC security quote for nine ninety Illinois Street. Ryan, will you come on up? This is Ryan, the new health administrator.
Aye. I'm gonna get this to you, if you could just pass it down, I don't have.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, all the estimates are in there.
Never mind.
Go ahead, have street, state, state your name and title, please.
Ian Beg, I am the new public health administrator for the Health Department, for the Marshall County Health Department. Um, we're requesting this service because when, as you guys know, we moved into this building just not too long ago. And this is only my first actual week week, I've only completed four days, so bear with me. Um, we're requesting this because uh the old Bowman Center, they didn't have anything as far as fire security cameras. Anything in the building, and we wanna secure our genealogy. Records, uh, birth, death records, um, medical health records and uh our computer systems and so on.
So what was it, I, I don't remember, what was the total amount on this?
Seven thousand two hun- it's right on the front page there, seven thousand two hundred and fifty-one. Fifty-one, I believe, is that what I wrote? Doc had three estimates and uh he wanted to go with ARC, I believe, because they're local, so he has the best services.
Yeah, seventy-two fifty-one, seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
And I'm assuming you got the money in your budget to pay for that? And this is because all they had before was the icons on their computer screens to alert security.
And there are keys in the back, I mean, we can unlock it, but as far as after hours, there's really nothing.
Nothing here. Any discussion? Motion?
I move to approve the ARC's uh security. Or we're approving the contract buyer, approving the, yeah, I had moved to approve the ARC's security uh.
Contract.
Contract for nine ninety Illinois Street.
Second.
And this, so we, I think you said, clarify, this was with Doc's recommendation, because he did get three. Uh, estimates, and this is one he recommended, so. Motion made in second to prove the ARC's security quote for nine ninety Illinois Street. For the amount of seventy-two hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, next one's H W C intercept service provider transition. I'm a little confused on this, and Angie, can you?
Dan's coming up.
Huh?
Dan's coming up.
This is one for the jail, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, you wanna explain this to us a bit more?
Sure.
I know just enough to be dangerous.
Um, so basically, right now, we have redundant internet services at the jail.
Name and title, please.
Sorry, Dan Sanmatano, H W C nineteen ninety West Jefferson Street Plymouth. Um, we've been having a lot of issues with surf internet lately at the jail. Um, as you know, the internet service at the jail now provides all the phone lines as well as all the uh internet services. Um, in moving the cat system to the cloud, we've noticed a lot more issues than we had previously. Um, we've had downtime, we've had outages, we've had a lot of things happening off hours that have caused a lot of headaches for the Sheriff's Department as well as. Hyperwave to manage and maintain those systems. Um, we would like to work with Choice Lite to bring in a separate service. Uh, partnered with uh them to bring in a more reliable internet connection than the one we're utilizing, utilizing from surf right now. Uh, the surf connection right now, we are not paying for. Uh, there was an agreement in place from predecessors to uh use tower space in exchange for that internet service. Um, but the time has come where we need, we are not getting the support we need from them, so we have to get something more reliable. Um, so I'd like to uh basically upgrade some equipment at the jail, re- re terminate and splice some fiber and get us that connection that we need to be that twenty-four seven. Reliable internet that we absolutely have to have. Um, right now, surf is utilizing tower space at the jail, the courthouse, as well as the highway garage. So, uh, in doing so, we'd have to end up charging them, renting basically at least that space. So, uh, part of that money is part of the Epic's, those Epic's towers, so there'd be more money going back into that fund.
So Angie, I think you said, I don't remember, where, there was a question about where we could pay this from?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where you're gonna, where the funding source would be, um. The Epic's fund, as Dan said, currently has the internet on there. They're gonna be paying rent back into that, but again, as we just said, that's a Health Department fund, so it would have to be a conversation with. Uh, Doc and the Health Department if they would fund this transition with the towers.
No, quick question, if surf is paying us rent to use. Our communication tower up here on the county building and stuff like that, does that have to go back in the Epic's fund?
That was the original purpose of that Epic's program many years ago.
The tower here at the courthouse is not part of the Epic's towers.
Okay.
So that one would be separate, the other two towers, the highway garage and at the jail would be, that would be feeding back into the Epic's fund.
And right now, do you have any service providers you're looking at to provide service out there?
The service would be provided through Hyperwave, through us.
Internet will?
Yes.
What do you guys get contracted through?
Uh, we get it, we buy it from, uh, in bulk from Cogent in um, in South Bend. Um, we're partnered with a few other uh companies in South Bend to pool that internet connections together to bring a lower cost down to Plymouth.
So I think any motion today would be happy, pending approval, where we're gonna figure out where we're gonna pay for it from.
What was the total amount again?
What was what?
Total? Or, or were you talking pulling it from the Epic's fund itself?
Well, I, we gotta figure out where we're gonna pull the money from, I mean, basically, they, all we do is decide to move forward, pending. Funding, once funding's put in place, we can move forward, but fifteen thousand eight twenty-five.
And for the time being, we're just gonna continue our existing arrangement and then make that change once we've. Found a funding source, basically, okay?
Um, and this only has one signature.
And I would prefer, I'm assuming you want me to sign, I prefer not to sign it till we know we got funding source in place. Are you guys comfortable, should Doc agree to that? Going to the Epic's fund?
I'm good with that, yeah.
If not, then we'll have to go somewhere else.
Yeah, that's the path of least resistance.
Yes, John.
Did Dr. Holland for- forward you a letter?
I have not seen it, if he did, I missed it.
He, he sent me a copy of it, told me.
Come forward, please.
Told me that he sent you a letter.
He did, I, I apologize, I missed, I've been to conference hall last week.
There's, there's only really two, two components in this letter that really affect. Uh, of Dan's proposal. And uh. Number one, uh, I'll just share this, this is a letter from Dr. Holland. Uh, the Epic's fund is now at risk by the Sheriff's Department, is what I'm hearing. First, they wanted radios, now they want to some internet improvement, not sure why they didn't have this in their own budget. And the second comment he has is finally, why no one from the Sheriff's Department or his department has contacted me about their needs. I think um, he just wanted that to be shared.
Can't answer, nobody's contacted him. I think technically. Doing what we're doing now, if we, if we do pay on Epic's, if he agrees. That was set up to provide internet.
I couldn't really hear what Dan was saying, and uh, are they proposing to pay rent on the tower then?
Uh, with surf, instead of, right now, there's a handshake agreement in place, they give a service for free in exchange for using the towers. Um, if we're switching away from surf, then surf will have to pay to use those towers.
Okay, so we need to have a, an agreement with those folks, Sean will prepare, I assume?
Yep.
Um, and that the tower at the county highway is an Epic's tower.
Yeah.
So.
In the county, I, if what he's saying, the two towers. That, and the one at the jail are Epic's, this one out here is not.
Correct, yes.
So them two towers will go back, whatever rents. Uh, be covered, would go back in that Epic's fund.
Yeah, is that rent negotiable, or has it been pre-established or?
Nothing has been established yet. I feel like it should follow the industry standard for tower space, what a commercial tower would be.
And. Sean will be taking the lead on this, or who's gonna?
That would say Sean would be taking the lead on bringing back a negotiated agreement to us for approval.
Those, those were the two things that Dr. Holland really was concerned with about, about that.
I can't answer the second one, John, but I, I think.
Yeah.
From what I was talking about, the Epic's fund, it's set up for internet service in the county, basically, and I think that qualifies.
And I think he's truly interested in doing what's best for the county and the taxpayer.
Yeah.
And I, and I obviously, we wanna make sure everybody's safe, including our first responder.
Right.
And I think this, this is the way that the process works, the, you know, we're responsible for facilities, so the Sheriff's Department came to the Commissioners, we're gonna go to. The Health Department and bring the request to them, and uh unfortunately, all this stuff is required to happen in public, so we're not trying to cut any.
No, no, I think that's, that's the way we wanna do it.
Yeah.
The way, we like to do business.
So, um.
So I guess, I guess the question right now is, do we wanna move forward pending? Pending uh. Funding?
Yeah, I would, I think it's, it's wise to move forward with this, I know we've had an ongoing issue with connectivity and that's, you know, not just an embarrassment, but it's a safety concern. Um, and if we're, if we're not able to get it from the Epic's fund, um, my second option would be to see if this is a uh special lit expense. That we could look at, at least for the next eighteen months while we still have it, and if not, then we can look to the general fund, so.
Okay, with that.
And you wanna approve me?
Yep, so I authorize, yep, so I move that we authorize the uh president to sign on behalf of the board for the uh H W C. Uh, internet agreement.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion made second to move forward, uh, pending funding for final approval, but pending funding for the ARC's uh security. Excuse me, for the H W C internet service provider for the jail, uh, with board president, once there's approval, signing on behalf of the Commissioners. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And the next item is Trex Program. This is something we, Jesse and I were down at conference last week, this is something come up, so I went and talked to David Bodnar. Uh, this started originally as a NACO program years and years ago, NACO kinda dropped it, but David brought it back to Indiana.
With the National Association of Counties.
Counties, correct, and David brought it back to Indiana, they've set it up. They serve, I think he said a couple hundred entities in the state of Indiana. Basically, what it is, what it boils down to in simple layman's terms, it's a collection agency for money's Otis. And uh, there would be some, there would be some uh. Uh, due diligence on our part to uh create a list, what's Otis, I know some of that's been going on over there now. Uh, I don't know if we'd have to hire somebody part-time to help with that. And then uh, basically, the first letter going out to these people. Uh, would be on us, and then after that, uh, there'd be a period of time, then they would take over and. Pursue any kind of collection uh opportunities. I think most of it basically goes down to, it's a program where the state will be notified, and if you have a check or return or anything coming. It's deducted from that. Am I right, correct?
Honorry winnings and um, income tax, anything that the state would be due to someone as a refund or a, a prize would be intercepted.
We would do that, now according to Dave, according to David, he sent out that letter, people finally. We would do that, now according to Dave, according to David, he sent out that letter, people finally realized you're serious. A lot of them walk in and pay it.
Yeah.
Uh, there, there's, there's a discrepancy, discussion, depending on who you listen to, there's a lot of money in Marshall County owed through fees, to the courts, through, uh, other fees and and, uh, I don't say liens, but I think plan department has some, I, I think they would qualify. I guess I'm asking today, would you guys approve if I contact, there's a lady doctor state that hand, or doctor, um, association, AIC that handles this, David wants to put us in, in touch with, would you guys be okay if I contact them or gather some more information? I mean, I don't want to waste my time and nobody's interested, but.
It, it sounds like a great opportunity to me, I, I would say if, uh, folks owe the government money, they probably shouldn't be getting tax refunds.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. I think David said they had two hundred million dollars they went after last year for people, ever, that was what turned in, that was what it started with, and then a bunch of people walked in and paid it, then they went after, uh, the rest. Uh, they collected more of it, and then there's always going to be a portion that will, is basically uncollectible.
Yeah.
But I think facing budget shortfall is coming up. Some of these programs run based on fee-based, that we need to try to help them collect their money.
Yeah.
So they can operate, uh, without coming to the council for money, so I guess I'm just asking for permission to go back and gather more information this time. Is that agreeable, everybody?
I'm giving that, yep.
Okay, I don't think we need a motion on that. Second item is owner occupied housing grant. Uh, they had told us when Shannon McCloud was here the last time we did it. Uh, there may be another round coming, I don't, we don't know the details yet, what that's gonna look like. But all we know is for right now, it's gonna be a ninety-ten. So we're gonna be on hook, somebody's gonna be on hook for ten percent on these projects. But right now, we don't know if Shannon would even take us on to do another project.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess again, I would just ask for permission, and then we have somebody call Shannon, gather more information, we can make determination next meeting if we want to move forward. Because right now, we don't know for sure the dollar amounts, how much is gonna be available. I think last time we did, what, seventeen projects, does that sound right, Sean?
Sounds, yeah.
Something like that, and that's, it, it, uh, was up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was through two phases. So, till we find out more information, so would you be comfortable if we contact Shannon and see if she'd be interested in handling for us again? I know she was pretty burnt out last time over some of the things that went on, but this time it's through Okra, so
Yeah.
Hopefully wouldn't have the problems we had last time, we eventually did get all her money.
Yeah, I, I, I do get the sense that working with Okra as opposed to working with, what was that other state agency?
Uh, HCDA.
Yeah.
Um, that, that should be, um, a better working relationship. Um, and I do think this is probably a, a debate that we'll have to have, it was, it was a no-brainer when it was free, you know, we had to do was administer it. Um, I know there'll probably be some folks who, um, won't like the idea of us spending even ten percent on this, and there's probably gonna be some people that think it's a great deal. So I would love to get some public input on this over the next few weeks, just so we can see how people feel about it. Um, but, you know, as we're looking at, you know, what do we do to take Marshall County to the next level, you know, stepping in and assisting people to stay in their owner occupied house, you know, um, for ten percent of the cost. Um, it sounds like it's something at least worthy, worthy of considering, and then, um, you know, seeing where the council would be on, on funding that ten percent, so.
I would assume it'll have to be applications again.
Yeah.
Most of this will go to, basically, there's, uh, a lot of times it's disabilities, people with disabilities that just need some help.
Yeah.
And that's what this program kind of focuses on, so I, I think the first thing, we don't have a good grand administrator, there's no use going any forward, any farther forward, so and first thing is we need to contact Shannon, so if you guys are okay with that. Sean or Angie or somebody will, will, will contact, uh, Shannon, see if she's interested again.
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that, I do have a question though, just because now, are there stipulations who can actually do the work?
No, it has to be bid.
Has, oh, it has to be bid out? You can't go in with, say, like, it try to use skill trades from some of the high schools to lower the cost to do more projects?
Well, under our.
I mean, if somebody has a contractor's license, is willing to.
Yeah. I don't know, Sean, that's something we can look at.
Yeah.
The rules on that, I don't know.
I would, I think that it's probably, I mean, there's federal guidance from, I think, the, uh, Housing and Urban Development Authority that dictates whatever the process is, and I'm pretty sure it's probably bids, but Shannon would be able to, or whoever was doing the administration would be able to look into that.
Because as we know, anytime you put anything out for a bid, it usually adds a thirty percent hike to the cost.
Well, last time, we only got one bidder.
Hmm, imagine, uh, uh, imagine that.
Only got one bidder, so.
So, I mean, if we can get this to be a little bit more competitive, to get more bang for the buck on that ten percent, do some more projects and um, adopting, adopting our special, oh, going back to, uh, regarding public-private agreements.
Yeah.
Can we utilize that resolution for this now?
I think that's a shame of a question.
Yeah, Dave, if we, if we can utilize that, that resolution now for our agreements with this, we might get a considerable better value out of our taxpayer dollars for that ten percent match. And potentially be able possibly help a few more people out if that's the route we choose to go.
Yep. Um, so I guess the question today is, do you want to, uh, contact Shannon, see if she's okay, we'll contact Shannon, see if she's up for this, at least we know. Because like I said, first, first steps, get a good grand administrator in place, if not, we're gonna just have problems.
Well, and I, I would go beyond that, I would be okay, um, with contacting her, and then if, if she's not on board, looking at who might be a second option, so.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, then we'll do that, we'll try to bring information back the next meeting. Uh, and the last thing I have under here, I have a new item. Um, I was at, Jesse and I was at conference last week, and I was sitting there in an awards ceremony, and all of a sudden, our auditor's name was come up. So, since you weren't there to accept your awards, would you please step up front so you can get the recognition you deserve? We have them here. And this is all a couple certificates. Uh, this is one for Angie Burchmire, AIC Institute for Excellence in County Government, continuing educate, education certificate, there's your one.
Thank you.
And this one here is a platinum master pin for all the effort you've put in, and I don't know all the rules, but I know it's a lot of hours you have to do.
Eighty hours.
Yes, of, of.
I have over a hundred and eighty hours of continuing education.
And there's your, there's your pin.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you bringing that back.
Pull them up, show them to public, so
Yes.
They can see what you got. And this, let me say publicly, thank you for all the work you and Tori do. Uh, if not for you two, the three of us are probably in jail. Thank you. Uh, anyone else have anything else?
I have nothing else today, uh, just one other item that came out of a safety meeting this morning, and that was, uh, I mentioned it to you and Sean a little bit earlier before the meeting, and that it was about, um, so first aid training, AED training, the CPR training for county employees and trying to get something like that set up. Um, Billy's gonna contact, uh, Mr. McIntyre from the Plymouth Police Department to see if he'd be interested or available to do the training for us. Uh, I am sure if he is, it'll involve some type of contract for a rate to pull that training, um, but I just wanted to put that out there, so everybody's aware of that.
Can you gather some more information?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Billy here, see if there's actual interest, if there's not interest there, we might need to go down a different route.
Yep.
Um, but, uh, I think it's support, I think it's, the training's an added benefit for county employees, and it's probably necessary, um, to have that.
Yeah, and some of that might be on our list with Bliss, they do some of that training too for liability, and I don't know there's a big list of categories, I don't know if that'd be on there or not, but they will come and do it for free also. I don't know about the AED training, but.
Well, from, from the information I was given during our safety meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but, uh, it's a two-hour class and we get our CPR cards out of the deal? If, if the training is done.
That was my understanding too.
Okay, that'd be good. Gather some more information and bring it back, I think it sounds great, I think, I think a lot of the employees would appreciate it.
Any information on HVAC?
HVAC, I gotta follow up with during our gap period here with Billy, go down there, take a look, take a look at the controls and get an item estimate pretty much, and what boilers and things like that are in place, uh, right now, what projected was, what was originally brought to us was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bill to update the control system for temperature control and climate stuff inside the building here, and, uh, talking to a few people and other, other folks, me and Jesse, now, we could probably, hopefully, get that down to about a hundred thousand dollars with the right people and expertise involved in that. Um, so I gotta get a little bit more information as far as the number of units and things from Billy, and then we'll have a night, better idea of how much we can get that dropped, cost-wise.
My, my thought process was, before we spend that kind of money, let's make sure we have an expert who, who can point us in the right direction and make sure we're making the right fix, so.
Yep. Okay, anything else?
No.
Thank you for working on that, keep us posted.
I'm moving that we adjourn.
Second? Second. Motion made second adjourn.
I can't say I'm sound too excited about it, Stan.
Motion made second adjourn.